With our work session, so Sarah, I will turn it over to you.
I'm going to turn it over to Jill Jollicar, our Assistant County Administrator, to introduce this work session today. I do want to state for anyone listening that the these work sessions are for informational purposes only and educational. And I'll turn it over to Jill.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm happy to be able to tee up a great conversation today focused on offering, for starters, a better understanding of the eviction process, what some current trends and happenings are today, some of our stakeholders in the community that are working to prevent evictions and support individuals that are at risk or and or experiencing evictions. So the and then we're going to hear from some of our partners statewide and local that are assisting in preventing evictions and providing resources to our community members. And then we're also going to have a conversation about some of the programs that you're familiar with. The Housing Stabilization Collaborative that we know is one of our local strategies to keep folks housed and supported and provide some rental assistance and navigation services. And then some that you may not be as familiar with that we're really excited about being and that being, excuse me, the landlord liaison program and how that program is really innovating to partner with the Housing Stabilization Collaborative, as well as our state partners with KHRC that are here that you'll hear from here a little bit. To try to craft what we hope will be some short term and some long term strategies to be able to support folks in staying housed, preventing homelessness, and making sure that we keep folks safely housed and thriving in this community. So for starters, we're going to hear from Carrie Launard with Kansas Legal Services. And then we're going to shift into hearing from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. We have Ryan Benson with us. I'm really grateful to have Ryan with us to talk about the CARA program and the partnership opportunities that Douglas County has to work with KHRC. And then we're going to hear from Gabby Sprague and Mariel Ferriero, Ferriero, excuse me, on the Housing Stabilization Collaborative and the Landlord Liaison Program and how those are working out. We are going to definitely spend some carve out some time to have a conversation, get some questions from the Commission, and would really like to start thinking about how, again, how do we sustain the work of these programs? We know that we needed to have a robust rental assistance, more robust rental assistance, and housing navigation services before the COVID-19 pandemic. We now know it's just essential to have that. So it's a matter of how do we sustain it? But also, how do we think about integrating legal services in with that as well? I think that's what it what's incredibly interesting that we'll hear about some of the work that Kansas Legal Services is providing. And some of the intervention strategies that KHRC is doing to try to make sure that they're providing resources to our district court judges who are right on the front lines of these evictions that are happening right now. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Carrie Launard with Kansas Legal Services to start off our conversation about the eviction process and some of the work that they're doing.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having inviting me this afternoon, as well as the other panelists. This is a topic I think that we're all working hard on, and we know that it's a true issue for our community. So to start with, just as far as Kansas Legal Services, I am the managing attorney in our Kansas Legal Services Topeka office, and Douglas County is one of our five counties that my office serves. Right now, we do not have a physical presence or location in Lawrence or Douglas County, but that's something we're working towards. So in regards to just speaking briefly, I know we're short of time, and I can spend a full hour plus talking about landlord tenant rights and duties and the eviction process. So I'm going to take I'm going to take what would normally be a couple hour presentation that I've done before and try to condense it into just a few minutes for you this afternoon. And please feel free to jump in and slow me down, ask questions as I'm speaking, because I want to make sure that I answer everyone's questions and cover the areas that you really feel the need for additional information on. So I think the first and foremost piece of the whole entire eviction process is that you, by the time we get to the word eviction, there are so many things that could have happened beforehand for tenants and for landlords. And so I think the key piece is education and education early. So that's one of the things that Kansas Legal Services really strives to do is try to put as much information out there for individuals to educate themselves regarding their rights and what their duties are as tenants. And so our website is just a wealth of information for individuals. There are, there's a lot of links to different resources. There's little videos. So I would encourage everyone to take a few minutes to to just peruse the Kansas Legal Services website. If you just type in landlord tenant or eviction, there's a lot of resources available there. If we get to the point where we're hearing the word eviction, there are two, the two reasons that someone would be evicted would be, number one, there was noncompliance with a lease agreement. And I would say that typically that is that the major ones would be that they have a pet that was in violation of the lease, or they've had numerous noise complaints and it's interfering with the the enjoyment of their neighbors, or they may be doubling up. So they've allowed friends or family members to stay with them temporarily, which would be a violation of their lease. In that regard, there the landlord is required to provide a, what we call a 1430 day notice to the tenant to essentially fix that noncompliance. So if you ask your friends or family members to leave within that 14 days, you provide notice to your landlord, and you've essentially fixed that that issue. The other, and if you're not able to do that, then the expectation or the requirement would be that you then vacate the residence within 30 days. If you're not able to fix it, that's why we call it a 1430 day notice. Or then if you do not fix it and you do not voluntarily then leave or vacate the residence, then then the landlord's going to begin the eviction process. The second main reason, and I think the one that we are probably going to be talking about a lot more today when we're talking about resources, would be nonpayment of rent. So right now, we know that because individuals have struggled with COVID-19, the restrictions keeping employment, just a number of different reasons why families are struggling financially, they're not able to pay their rent, and they've had to make a choice of do I put food on the table or do I pay do I pay rent? The other reason that we oftentimes hear is that someone may not be paying rent because of habitability issues. So just as kind of a side caveat, we want to make sure that tenants are very aware that you you if someone is, if the landlord is not complying with their duties to maintain a habitable residence, you are not able to withhold rent. And so we hear that a lot from tenants that I've, you know, I've struggled, I'm trying to pay my rent, I've told him to, you know, fix the mold that's growing, or, you know, there's electrical problems or whatever it may be. And they're just not fixing it. So I didn't pay rent this month. And now we're in trouble because you still have a duty to continue to pay your rent as you're trying to work with the landlord about this habitability issues. But if it's a if it's a true nonpayment of rent in regards to just your inability, then the first step for us in making sure, and I know that that's on the agenda, is looking at the the resources both that Douglas County has, as well as just here in the state with the CARA program have been instrumental in working with our clients. But what, yes.
Carrie, can I interrupt you? Sorry, this is
Absolutely.
With the nonpayment of rent and the uninhabitable conditions or issues that haven't been fixed or addressed, is there any exception to that in state law that you're aware of? You know, are there any like major life safety issues that, for example, like municipal code enforcement, which I know varies community to community, and we're talking about state laws? But just to be clear, are there any exceptions to that where there's a maybe a valid case to be made for why payment shouldn't be remitted if life safety issues aren't being addressed?
Yes, and there's, there's, there's code. I mean, we have the Lawrence property codes, we have city codes, we have county codes, we have state codes. And those are all important things that to take into account. And there can be an answer and an affirmative defense that an individual can file as part of their answer if they are served with the petition, asking them essentially an eviction action in the court. There can also be formal counterclaims. However, oftentimes what we're finding is that the court is perceiving it and under the law, if it is nonpayment of rent and they haven't fixed it, even if you have an affirmative defense, and even if you have valid counterclaims, our judges are still oftentimes within the within the statute are able to essentially evict because they didn't pay their rent. That doesn't mean that the case won't continue on. But we haven't solved the issue of the fact that now we have an eviction on on their record. And as well as just the issue of then trying to figure out an alternative housing option for that for that family. So one of the, so that I guess where that where that would get us is if someone is not paying rent, then they're going to receive the three day notice to evict. And that I would say more often than not is served to the individual by tacking it on their door. It can be served by the sheriff, or they can receive it in the mail. But I would say most often they're receiving it tacked to their door. If they are not then paying rent within that three days, then the landlord can take action then to file a petition with the court to evict them. And the, once they're served with that summons, then is set three to 14 days from the time that that petition is filed and served. And so it's a very fast process. So what we're finding a lot of times is that people are getting to us. And so that's that key education piece that we're often trying to to talk to our community partners with, that we're trying to make sure that we we get that information out on our website and anytime that we're speaking with folks. So once that petition is filed, then they set it for what they call the answer hearing. And in Douglas County, that is held on Friday mornings at the Douglas County Courthouse outside of the Pro Tem courtroom. And so if nobody shows up, if the if the tenant doesn't show up, then they're going to have a default judgment against them. So we tell people always show up, no matter what. Even if you don't think you have any type of case, even if you still intend to leave, show up to see if there are negotiated negotiations that can happen with the with the landlord or the landlord's representative. But you want you want to make sure that you're responding to that summons. Otherwise, you're having that default judgment on your record, which makes it very difficult for individuals then to secure future housing and lease options and that sort of thing. So once, once they arrive at the courthouse, they are given a form outside of the Pro Tem courtroom that essentially says admit or deny. And what we're, and this is their, 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 you know, what we would consider the formal answer unless they've talked with us in advance and they've had an opportunity to get a written formal answer on file, or they've talked to another attorney, or they they've accessed some resources and have that that information. So someone goes in there and they haven't talked to an attorney, they haven't talked to a court liaison or an advocate, and they say, wow, admit or deny, I haven't paid my rent. So I'm going to tell the truth, I'm going to admit it. And I mark that check and I turn it in, and now they're just told they can leave because they've admitted to the what's been pled in that petition, and now they have it, they're going to have a judgment against them. So a lot of times, once they're marking that admit, then they're leaving. And now they have, not only then are they going to have a judgment, but then they're going to have a writ of execution to leave the residence if they don't leave on their own. So what we tell people or what we try to advise people is, even if, even if you're, even if you acknowledge that you haven't paid rent, there might be a number of reasons, and you wouldn't have the opportunity to file a more formal answer. Assert those affirmative defenses that may apply. Be able to plead those counter claims if they apply. And so we want people to know that they can mark deny. And then what if they do that, they can enter that they'll enter the courtroom, speak with the clerks, and they'll get a hearing date. That hearing date has to be within 14 days. So I would say typically, we're seeing it if it's Friday morning, we're seeing it probably about a week and a half, about mid. So about, about seven, eight days from there is when we're seeing that those are being set. And that allows individuals hopefully then to get further assistance. They can file a more formal answer with those affirmative defenses, counterclaims, hopefully access some other community and state resources and work work out some negotiations with the other side. If, if they are not successful in challenging the eviction and the and the landlord is able to obtain a judgment against them, then if they don't voluntarily vacate, then then a writ requesting possession will be filed and then served by the sheriff, where they'll be forced then to leave the residence. So what, are there other, are there questions? As I was kind of going through that process quickly, or particular areas that you want to make sure that I that I cover as far as the process goes?
Carrie, I was just going to ask. And then, you know, how often are you then hearing from folks that have one an eviction on their record that that's the barrier that they're then trying to get beyond to move forward in the future to to get housing? Does that, is that something that you see as well?
It's huge, yes. So it can be a barrier for them to access public housing and qualify for public housing. We have, you know, we, it's a fairly small community. The landlords know each other. And they know how to get information. And once you have that eviction on your record, it is really hard to overcome because the housing market is so, so tight, and there's just not a lot of available affordable housing for our community. And so having that eviction on your record is very, very, it creates a huge barrier for for individuals.
Commissioners, there's no question on this top, this point.
Portio, go ahead.
Carrie, this is Commissioner Shannon Portio. You mentioned in kind of those answers to the court that one of the big stumbling blocks is that people often fill out paperwork in a way that they're being honest and truthful, but that also makes it so that it's harder for them to challenge the eviction. I know we need to get information to tenants to make sure that they have the support they need in filling out that paperwork. But have we also worked with the courts in any way to make sure that, is there some intervention that we can provide administratively so that people have all of the information they need to fill that out before they go through that paperwork process?
So I'd you ask that question. So we, we actually, our office, and I know there's some other community providers that are also, this is also on their on their radar and something that they're working towards. But we have worked with other, some of our other counties across the state, and I would say from my office, most recently, we've been working with Shawnee County to, number one, provide information about Kansas Legal Services for individuals on the on an information sheet that they're receiving when they're receiving the summons. So they're they're receiving information about how to contact like Washford Law Clinic or, you know, KU Law Clinic, and then Kansas Legal Services as a resource. So just just making sure that they have that information and they know that there's options out there to have legal, obtain legal advice. Additionally, I think that creating some type of definition that would be just a basic definition or information for people about what the words admit and deny mean. I think that's important. I don't think they, there's just nobody, they're not understanding truly what what they're marking. The other piece is potentially having, and this is something that is one of my goals, is to see about having staff or interns or someone available for individuals at Friday morning to to be available at some sort of help desk so that people can answer questions or have received some legal advice on those Friday mornings. And that would be early on enough that hopefully we can, we can assist with with some of those negotiations. So that's something that, again, our office has been able to do in some of our other counties is being, making sure that we have someone available at those, what we, those first appearances. And I actually am meeting with one of our judges tomorrow. And there's two, two things on the agenda. One, one of those being discussing some type of pro se assistance and help desk. So I'm not sure what what the goal is in regards to that conversation, but I'm hoping that this can be that the eviction docket can be one of those, part of that conversation.
Great, thank you.
This, Commissioner Reed, I would just add to that, that in conversations with Judge McCabry, I've heard about this topic. He has acknowledged that a desire to look at that summons language and then also the writ of restitution language, if it goes that far, but to make it as accessible as possible. And so I think that, Carrie, your point about the admit or deny and those definitions being very clear is a is a helpful note. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, or is this time primarily for Commissioners? Okay, Carrie, how have you seen rental assistance programs like the CARA program, like the HSC program, used in the interim between the docket signing and the eviction hearing? Have you seen a lot of like people being able to get resources in between that time and being able to come to some sort of solution with their landlord, or just generally, how have you seen that play out?
We have, and I, and I, and I don't have numbers. So I, you know, I want to almost say like 50/50. It depends on, it really depends on the circumstances and and I think that landlord tenant relationship. And so what we're finding is we have a lot of landlords who are very open to working with tenants and and understand what that program, what the, what what it, what it's there to do and are willing to fill out the information and work with them, especially with the CARA program and the expedited process that they have in place. We, we have utilized that. In fact, I used it last week where, not not in Douglas County, but in one of our other counties, standing, we were getting ready to enter the trial for the eviction process, and they were not going to negotiate with us with just the email validation that she had completed, the the application process with Kara. But we were able to get on the phone through the expedited process, get a person on the phone that said, hey, she's approved. All you have to do is the landlord has to just fill out his checkboxes online, and and the money will be in the bank by Friday. And because the landlord's attorney heard that on the phone with us in the hall, then they were willing to essentially continue the case out. And then as long as that money showed up to cover the rent, and we were able to, she, she received approval for coverage for several months, I think through January. And so because she received that confirmation, then once the money showed up, then they were going to dismiss the case and avoid that eviction.
That's great, thank you. I'm currently also using the escalation team with somebody that I am working with, so it's great to hear.
Yeah, it's
I had one more question, too. So you said, I know that Commissioner Shannon Reed and and Marielle and I have talked about this a little bit, but what does it look like to, to, to continue the case on instead of the lawyer filing a dismissal? And what does that sort of look like? With a continuance, does that still on a person's record that they had an eviction filing against them, or does that work to their detriment in any way if a lawyer does not file a dismissal?
If if the dismissal is not on file and it's continued, I mean, at some point, there's going to need to be a resolution in the case. So so in the, in the example that I provided, we, as long as the money was received, we continued it out. And the agreement was there would be a dismissal, and that would be something that the individual, the tenant could show a future landlord if they were asked, hey, have you ever been evicted? I I'm aware of a court case that was filed, and they can show that order of dismissal without any type of judgment. So that would be something that would be important for the tenant to be able to provide. If the, if it's continued out and there's not an order of judgment against them, they can at least say that there's never been an order of judgment against them. But but really, you want to make sure that there's that order of dismissal on file.
Thank you.
I just want to jump in real quick and and respond to one other thing, I think, Gabby, that you were mentioning in regards to the CARA, the the piece that I think we find frustrating is that we have had landlords elect not to participate in the program. And there, for whatever reason, there's, there's maybe not the best relationship between the landlord and tenant. And if it's, their goal is to evict the individual, and if it's not for nonpayment of rent, then they're finding other reasons to do so, unfortunately. The other, the other thing I think to answer the Commissioners' questions in regards to, you know, possibilities for working with individuals is there are some jurisdictions in other states where they have provided mediation services available to people at that first appearance. And so I think that that's something that could also be a useful tool.
Carrie, you said other states. Does that mean you don't know of anybody, any county in Kansas that has implemented that?
I'm not, but I'm that that it may be happening. I'm just not aware of it.
Sure, okay, thanks.
I was, I attended a training several months ago, and there was a judge that was talking about her state, and she had started in her in her area, and then they ended up implementing it across the state, and I can't remember which state up the top of my head. But they found that it was so successful that it was something that they decided that they wanted to implement across the state.
I'm going to move us along, if that's okay. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask, we've talked about the CARA program just a minute ago, and this, I think, is a nice time before we jump into our local interventions. I want to ask Ryan Benson to jump in, and I know, you know, when we talk about landlords that have and have not been willing to work with this program, I think it's really a great opportunity to have Ryan with us today and talk about just what, just what an opportunity we have with KHRC and how responsive they've been to some local concerns that have been expressed by some stakeholders in Douglas County to make sure that we're really leveraging that program to the greatest extent possible. Ryan's team has been very responsive. And I know Gabby and Dana and Rebecca Buford with HSC and some of our stakeholders have really been trying to get all the pieces together to make sure we're being good partners. But with that, Ryan, go ahead and take some time and talk about some of the things that KHRC is doing.
That's great. Thank you so much, Commission and Joe. And it's so nice to actually put some faces with names. Gabby and I have exchanged some emails over the last couple of months, and you know, we have wonderful partners that are dedicated to doing the same work that we do at Kansas Housing in Douglas County. So I appreciate the invitation, the opportunity to talk a little bit high level, to delve into some Douglas County numbers, to talk about the partnerships that we're building, and certainly to field some questions at the end. So let me just kind of fly through some of the prepared remarks, and then I can jump into that if you're all right with that. So Abby, if you could go ahead and advance the slide here. Just as far as an overview, I realize some of you may not be familiar with Kansas Housing itself, so I will briefly talk about my organization and the programs we administer. I'm going to talk about just the overall challenge that we've seen, how COVID has made a housing problem in our state and in Douglas County a housing crisis. I'm going to very quickly walk you through CARA, how it works, some of the metrics, who we've helped, and then do just kind of a shout out and a discussion about some of the the great community partners that we have, some of which are on this call. So we'll jump into the material here. As far as who we are, we are a nonprofit public corporation. We used to be actually a state agency, but under the Sebelius administration, we became freestanding. Our mission is simple. We help Kansasans access the safe, affordable housing they need with the dignity they deserve. And I stress dignity because whether we're working with people who are about to be evicted from their homes, whether we're working with landlords who can't pay their bills, it's vital that we remember that these are real people in real homes that we're talking about and working with and working together to save. So we remember that in Kansas Housing, and we know that you all do in Douglas County. Who we work with, we work with you, Commissioners and and housing partners and stakeholders across Douglas County and across our state. But we'll go ahead and now just give you a very quick snapshot of the variety of programs that we administer at Kansas Housing. Everything from funding homeless shelters and domestic violence centers, including in Douglas County. We provide tenant based rental assistance. We fund community action agencies around the state. We finance actual housing development in your community through our housing tax credit program and a variety of different development programs. We regulate manufactured housing. We have a down payment assistance program. We provide weatherization assistance and contract administration, and these are during the normal times. Right now, we have taken on and stepped up to the challenge of COVID with a variety of emergency programs that I'll primarily talk about today. But as you have time, I'd certainly encourage you to check out our website and just find out about the these important traditional programs we have in Douglas County and in your community. But let's go ahead and talk about just the eviction challenge that we have in our state. I like to point out about a third of our state rent their homes. And I always use the word homes because I think it's vital to remember that we're talking about real people when we're talking about the importance of keeping people in their homes at a time of crisis. Currently, as of about July, we were seeing a range between about 14,000 and 27,000 of our renter households in the state of Kansas at risk of eviction at some level. And a big shout out to Carrie and our friends at Kansas Legal Services who do tremendous work to keep people in their homes because it is truly a collaborative effort. But we've got to remember But we've got to remember, it's not just about the impact even through these eviction moratoriums that these difficult times have had on tenants. Our landlords, our small businesses, many of which have bills to pay of their own mortgages, taxes, insurance. We are now seeing an estimate of about two hundred and seventy five million dollar in back rent for our landlords. Which has an impact on their businesses. It has an impact on our tax coffers and on Douglas County specifically. Landlords have seen a decline of about twelve percent revenue while they've seen about a fifteen percent increase in costs during this pandemic. So I'm thrilled to talk to you about some resources that address the needs of landlords and of tenants to keep people in their homes and to make our businesses whole. Let's go to the next slide, though, and we're going to talk now about, I guess, here's just a charge just showing kind of that back rent that's grown. But let's talk about the response that Kansas Housing has taken since the beginning of the pandemic. We've received about twenty five million dollars for our great nonprofit partners around the state, including in your area. Last fall, we launched a twenty million dollar Kansas eviction prevention program. It was wonderful. It was open for about sixty days because it used CARES funds that expired quickly. But we know and you know that the pandemic crisis has been ongoing. And that just because the page on our calendar turned to twenty twenty one, the needs of Douglas County and your citizens didn't change. Because of that, luckily, Congress recognized the need for a massive national emergency rental assistance program. We got the program launched in March and I'll be going into some detail on that. I'm also going to briefly touch on our Bridge to Housing Stability Initiative and our new Kansas Homeowner Assistance Fund that we'll be launching shortly. But let's go into CARE specifically. Again, we launched this program in March of twenty twenty one. It's an online program very similar to KEPP that we had last fall. And we have an enormous amount of resource and it's important to highlight and to remind folks that these resources are independent of the eviction moratorium. So I'm sure you've all heard from your constituents and your communities and your partners, your tenants and landlords. Fear and stress and challenges of eviction moratoriums being lifted. However, these dollars are available to your community through twenty twenty five. So for the next four years, we've got these dollars to assist. Let's go to the next slide, though, and we are going to talk just about some numbers now. And again, these are people, these are lives. To date, we have served almost nine thousand households in our state since March. We've served almost twenty two thousand Kansans, which is a remarkable number. It's a remarkable success. But it's a remarkable way of capturing the challenges and the struggles and the need that is out there in our state. When you think that twenty two thousand people, in addition to approximately twenty five thousand people that were served by KEPP. Have been facing eviction during this time of the pandemic. Under CARE, we are just an inch short of fifty million dollars out for the program. We're serving about five hundred households per week with approximately two to three million dollars going out of our office every week. But let's talk about your community. Douglas County, today we've served seven hundred and five households. We've gotten almost four million dollars out the door to your community. To keep your tenants in their homes and to make your small businesses whole. That's remarkable. It's taken a collaboration with some great partners in your community. We're proud of that, but we know that the work is ongoing and will be for the months and even years to come. Let's go to the next slide here. Just a reminder that these are real people again, this quote here from one tenant. It just talks about how without the rent and utility assistance CARE was able to provide, they wouldn't be, they would be without a home alone in a big scary world. And I think you and I know that this can be a scary world and it sure seems like it can be scary when you're at risk of losing your shelter. And your hub that connects you to everything and that's a home. But let's talk now about the partners that we have enjoyed in Douglas County. And that includes the county itself, Jill and good friends there. But we have also worked with the a number of different community partners that you see listed on your screen. I'll tell you, it hasn't always been seamless. We've learned and some of it is because of conversations with your tenant advocates. With your nonprofits, with your landlords in your community. But as we've talked about earlier, we have learned and we've listened and we've had those conversations and that dialogue. And that's vital because as Treasury has relaxed the federal requirements, we've had the ability to fine tune. The program to better meet your needs. But let's continue on now just with a couple of the last slides and then we can turn to any questions you may have. We've talked about escalations or you've all talked about escalations. I'm so pleased that that came up because it's been vital to making sure. That a process that sometimes can take four weeks from start to finish or even longer to to get those applications processed. That we have a triage set up so that if people are facing that imminent eviction. If we're getting calls from people saying that they're going to be losing their home, that the sheriff is at their unit right now. That we have resources and a team dedicated, we have seven staff at KHRC that do nothing but escalations. Some days we'll have forty families, cases get escalated. Some of those days it'll be five. It just depends on the need. We've got also a Bridge to Housing Stability Initiative that some of these great partners have been partners partners with. We're able to get same day hotel motel vouchers out to individuals when we get those phone calls. To make sure that we have a backstop, to make sure that we have a backup plan if they should be. Out on the street to keep them housed until we can get them some of those wraparound services to get some permanent housing. In addition, we have been working with Kansas Segal Services with the legal community. We've got a hotline, as Carrie had shared, where judges can call us or people who are within the system. And the Kansas Segals, Kansas Supreme Court have been a vital partners for us, helping us get the word out in outreach. But also in education to make sure that people are aware that these resources are here. And that landlords are better served to wait a little bit to apply for the funds. And so that they're made whole and they're not out of all of that back rent that they may have accrued during the moratorium. Next slide, please, Abby, and we will just make sure that you all know that in addition to resources for renters that we've got through CARE. That are available through twenty twenty five, we know that there's homeowners who are behind in their mortgages that are behind in their utilities. Currently, that's approximately fifteen thousand home loans in our state, seventy percent of which are delinquent more than ninety days. We've got fifty six million dollars for the state of Kansas available for this program, which will be launching in early twenty twenty two. And we've got the plan submitted to Treasury and are waiting for their approval. We'll be talking to you all, to our great housing partners. We've got a little bit more time with this one, but we know it's important to get your feedback so that we're designing a program that meets your homeowners' needs. As well as your renters. Last slide is just to give you our contact information so that we can continue to get your feedback. Because we very much welcome and appreciate it. And that that concludes my prepared remarks. I'm very happy to field any questions you may have.
Thanks, Ryan. That was really helpful. I think we'll go ahead and move into, I'm going to let Gabby. Just provide a brief update and some of the work that HSC is doing and some of those recent conversations with Brian's team. And how HSC is working carefully to make sure that we're not duplicating any resources. But we're making sure that we're supporting folks in the best way possible with, in particular, some of the emergency funding that the county has provided. But then we need to make some time also to let Marielle talk a little bit about. How HSC and a landlord liaison program are really teaming up to hopefully have some meaningful longstanding change here too. So Gabby, go ahead and provide an update.
Thank you, Ryan, for giving that little synopsis of the successes of the CARE program and I truly do appreciate all the work that you all have done. Yeah, so we've been working really hard to make sure that people stay housed here in Douglas County with a sort of. A combined effort of of using the CARE program and what emergency funding we have access to. So from April eighth, twenty twenty one to September thirtieth of twenty twenty one. We've given out a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars in rental assistance distributed to a hundred and forty six families. With an average payment of eleven eighty six fifty. That has been used in conjunction with the CARE program in many instances, particularly in situations with upset landlords. That don't want to engage with the CARE program or the inappropriateness of CARE to the to the situation, which happens occasionally. And then also some homeless households. Some barriers that we've seen that makes the emergency funding really applicable here in Douglas County. Based on what we've engaged with with tenants and also what tenants have told us. Sometimes there is a barrier needing the concrete lease as opposed to a verbal agreement. That is what the landlord and tenant have going for the two of them. I know that there are options with the CARE program to alleviate that, but it seems to delay the process a little bit. And having some access to that more emergency funding is helpful in those situations. If an application is started during the lease, but the processing time of the CARE program extends beyond the lease. Then it becomes a little more difficult and takes a little bit more time to process. There's a level of technical computer knowledge that is required, I would say, of the CARE program. I think it's really beneficial when we have the many of the community partners that Ryan listed out there. We work with in engaging tenants to get them on the CARE program. However, it does require that the tenant goes to one of those organizations that has access to those computers, has access to that technical knowledge in order to help them through that. The length of time to actually submit the application, some people don't have the time to go and do that with us. The length of time for application to be approved, this has greatly and immensely been improved on the side of the CARE program. Where I helped folks with the program and it took four to five months, but now I'm seeing more like four weeks for people to get. Their applications processed, which is amazing and super great. Sometimes there's some communication differences among CARE staff. You'll call somebody on the helpline, the a number I have memorized now, and you'll get different answers from different folks. And also the lack, there's a requirement of a social security number or other federal identification number that sometimes. Prevents people from putting in applications. Aside from the tenant side of things, we have some landlords who have complained a little bit about the CARE program. And I had a landlord tell me the other day, like, I tell people to go to you and not the CARE program because it's just been so much easier with us. But having said that, I am getting a person on the CARE program who's engaging with that landlord. But there's a certain lack of trust in the CARE program that landlords have had, I think, in the in the period where the program development was happening. With the CARE program between the opening of it in March and potentially like August. There was a lot of distrust created with landlords. There've been quite a few difficult conversations that I've had to have and community partners have had to have with landlords to to get them. To accept the CARE payment and go through that sort of process. So it's been a little bit difficult, particularly as the HSC since fall of twenty twenty has built up our sort of rapport with landlords. Here in Douglas County. A requirement, some landlords have require that our property managers, as opposed to the owners. There's been a requirement that people provide the deed of to show ownership of the property. I'm not sure if that has changed much at all, but I have seen that occasionally and have done that with the co-ops here in town as well that I manage. Again, I I was told by landlords that different information was given to them from different CARE staff members. And again, that could also just be ways that people communicate. I had one individual I was working with in the co-ops that said that they are no longer accepting eviction notices. And I was like, this is not true. I know that's not the case, but something that a staff member had said to them, a CARE staff member had said to them made that person think that. And then also that I know there's a little bit difficulty in receiving funding after a tenant leaves the property. So say a tenant in their lease ends here in October, but they still have all of this unpaid rent and they just leave. It's somewhat difficult if the tenant is not working with the CARE program and working with the landlord to get some of that funding. That way the landlord becomes whole. Just aside of the CARE program and the difficulties with that and what we've been experiencing. We're still getting about two to three mental assistance applications per day, many of them with three day notices. I know the numbers are for evictions are pretty much slated to be what they were in twenty nineteen. However, the eviction moratorium, we may, from the eviction moratorium ending, we may still see some of the ramifications of that here in the next coming months. We've also been in a housing crisis regardless of the pandemic. And I think that local rent and utility assistance will continue to be a part of the solution. In addition to the rent and utility assistance that HSC is doing, speaking of mediation. We are looking into some options here to provide mediation at the level before courts, before an eviction hits the court system. And during, so hopefully, we're looking at maybe being the only county in Kansas to do that, which would be super great. Another thing that we're looking at is establishing more concrete landlord engagement practices. But as Jill said, we need to provide time for Marielle to speak on that. So that's pretty much what the HSC has been seeing and what we've been engaging with as far as. Not avoiding duplication of efforts using the CARE program and the emergency funding that the Douglas County has dispersed to us. And many of you have heard that trail already and I apologize. So I hope it was quick.
Thanks, Gabby. Go ahead, Marielle.
Thank you, Gabby, for providing that information and everyone before Gabby, I think. What I'm going to be able to offer and discuss and bring to the table this evening is more on the prevention side. Of course, rental assistance, emergency rental assistance is something that has been an invaluable resource in our community. Especially during this pandemic. I think Carrie might have mentioned it that there there is the. Issue of sometimes tumultuous relationships between landlords and tenants. And how do we as community members, as service providers, as stakeholders, start to have a real conversation of? Why is there this imbalance in tenants and landlords and what do we do to support? And so my position here with the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority as landlord landlord liaison. Is to start having those conversations and starting to bridge the gap between the disconnect of landlords, tenants. And social service providers. And so just a brief rundown, a little bit of what we are doing here at the Housing Authority and then our partnership with HSC. So just first, big goal of mine and I think a big goal in sustainability of housing is addressing the need for acceptance of vouchers. Personal belief and I think a belief here at the office is that vouchers and subsidy payments are something that is sustainable. Something that works for individuals who are low income and something that is really going to help address our housing crisis. The instability that is currently existing and providing supplementation to community members who just don't make enough money to be able to afford. The housing. And so with that, the conversations need to be, how do we come to landlords and say vouchers are good? The stigma around what I we formally call Section Eight, I call them simply vouchers now, just to kind of take that stigma away. They are actually beneficial to you. They are guaranteed rent payments. The tenants are great. They are people who are just needing a little bit of assistance. So in that, I've been having a lot of conversations with different landlords, really listening to them. And trying to hear what their qualms are with the program, what issues they've been having, if any. And how does that compare to having a non-voucher tenant? And is there really a genuine difference there? Other things that I've really been promoting is we've had the opportunity through ASG funding to start providing risk reduction funding. And so I offer sign up bonuses and offer damage mitigation funding to landlords. Who agree to rent to those tenants who potentially have a little bit higher barrier. Namely, those who are experiencing homelessness and really trying to get them in space and make sure that there is safe housing for the tenants. But also that the landlord's investment properties are taken care of by providing them actual dollars to be able to take care of that. And what I'm also doing here is trying to ease the process and make sure that. Are becoming a landlord with the Housing Authority is easy, is seamless and as quick as possible. So we can have more options for housing, have more landlords sign on. So those are the big projects happening here with the Housing Authority is just to make vouchers a good thing. And just to make people aware that that is a part of community investment. And in that, I've had the wonderful opportunity to begin partnering with Gabby and the HSC. To discuss how we as a collaborative and social service providers can really begin to have these good conversations with landlords. How can we bring them to the table to have these discussions? And again, how do we bridge that gap? Where is the disconnect? And so we have begun having monthly landlord engagement meetings where we bring service providers in to the conversation. To talk about their efforts in housing navigation. We discussed the successes and. We discuss the successes and challenges they've had with their various programmings, such as rapid rehousing voucher programs, the CARE program, HSC, and helping their clients find housing. What are the obstacles when talking to landlords? What are the hesitations? And how can we come together as a collective to start really addressing those in a meaningful way that bring both parties into the conversation? And we also have been starting to collect data on what the screening processes are for applications to be able to lease a property and what are potential barriers in that? And where do those come from? And how can we start having conversations about changing that screening criteria or lowering that screening criteria or making them more accessible for tenants by creating a really good established relationship? And all of that, one of the really exciting things that we are starting to work on is a landlord membership opportunity where landlords have the opportunity to be a part of this collaborative, be a part of our collective, and they'll be able to access benefits like the incentive funding that I mentioned. There was discussion about having some skill sharing for tenants. So we have move-in ready tenants. They're able to list their units to us. The, one of the really cool ideas is we are reaching out to Supreme Court Justice certified mediators to come in and start providing mediation services. Gabby and I already kind of do that on, on a less professional or official level. But how do we start negotiating these conversations, navigating this conflict before we even get to the courtroom? And I think that is the essential that we're working on. And bringing in mediation services at the forefront is going to be a big solution and, and really making sure that we reconnect and reestablish these relationships and know that it has to be a working partnership between landlords and tenants. Finally, the benefits to our partners in the HSC is that we will be working with landlords to list the properties internally with us, asking them to consider lowering some of their screening requirements. So our social service providers with maybe those individuals who have higher barriers, say in eviction, maybe a poor credit score, can have access to listing houses and landlords who are going to be willing to work with them. We incentivize and benefit those landlords as much as possible. So truly our world, my overall goal in this position is to start those conversations. Is to say, this is the space that we're in now. How do we start bringing everyone to the table? And how do we collectively start working towards more sustainable housing? And we do that by listening and addressing each issue as if everyone at the table was on equal terms. And so that's the, the work that we're doing here with landlord engagement. And that's the honor I have to do with the HSC. I'm happy to answer any questions about the engagement and we will have more information as we start rolling out those programs, as we start getting more in-depth with the conversations and as we start bringing landlords to the table and asking them, how can we be supportive to them as we're also supporting tenants?
Commissioners, I want to pause now for any questions that you have or dialogue about. You know, one of the things I know that some of the partners and I have talked about and Commissioner Reed has joined some of those conversations as well as how do we think about some of the work that Douglas County is poised to do in the future with our human services program manager that we approved in the 2020 budget to think a little more intentionally about how we formally support, whether it's an HSC-like program, thinking and more strategically with programs like the Landlord Liaison Program. I think there's good news that Marielle, maybe you can pass along that the, the way, the support that the Housing Authority has on a long-term basis to support the Landlord Liaison Program. It is awarded one-time money through the ESG grant through the city. But again, we, if I attend the monthly HSC meetings and I attend the meetings that happen in tandem with this, with the, that are facilitated by Marielle on landlord engagement strategies. And all the partners are coming to the table. They're all looking to Gabby and Marielle. And they're figuring, and they're trying to figure out, how can we have collective impact together? And I think that is exactly the kind of, that's what Sarah and I have been wanting to see in this community. And I think that's what best, I know that's what best serves our clients when they're navigating a crisis. The fewer stops that they have, the more connections they have to such robust services like CARE, the better off all of our clients are going to be, our, our community members are going to be. So those are the things we're thinking about. We don't have answers to, but we would love to have some feedback from you all about how we should navigate these conversations moving forward.
This is Commissioner Portillo. I really appreciate this conversation and I appreciate all of the collaborative work that the various organizations are putting in. I, I feel like I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but one thing that does just keep coming to mind is the administrative burden that we're putting on tenants to access so many of these resources. We have a lot of great resources and we have a lot of, a significant amount of funding coming from federal sources and state sources and local sources. And what we're seeing is just a really difficult process for folks to navigate. So I really appreciate you all thinking through that and thinking about how we can lessen the administrative burden on every one of our community members. And engagement with landlords seems to be like a really great place to start, making sure that we're connecting with folks before they go into any sort of hearing without representation is incredibly important. So thank you for thinking through those things and I'm sure doing it in a way that really centers the most marginalized in our community. I appreciate all of the work on that, but it does break my heart to hear about how much administrative burden we have on folks who need these resources. So thank you for coming to the table and collaborating and making sure that we can make as big of an impact as possible.
This is Commissioner Kelly and I, I don't want to lose track for, I mean, we jumped right into the discussion of what services are available and that was really helpful and really thoughtful. But could you talk just a little bit, I know some of you work with these clients every day, these people every day. You know, people are hearing out there like there's lots of jobs available and people aren't working. And yet we have this gap between being able to afford housing. Can you talk just a little bit about that and, and maybe what your thoughts are, things that we can change upstream of this? So we don't get to this eviction place where we're having to put so many services in place. I just, I think it'd be good to remind the community, remind all of us, like, how did we get here? And are there things we can do prior to this crisis situation that sometimes people are in? Marielle, you look like you're ready to go there.
Sure. So if I'm understanding the question, that's, it's more of how did we get to the point where housing became such a, a crisis? Why, why, why are we seeing this need for support? And I think that on my side, there's been a lot of stigmatizing for both parties, both how landlords are functioning and how tenants are being treated. And so I think that's the big goal for myself and for, I think, the programming with, with the Housing Authority and with HSC is to start having those conversations as why are vouchers not being accepted anymore? Why is it tough to get the acceptance of rental assistance? Why is this such a tumultuous process to be able to just request help to pay that rent? And I think there's a lot of opinions that have been made, a lot of, also things that have, have been done and the balance currently is, is not in favor of community members who need more affordable housing. And so I think that is the issue. Rent is expensive here. Property is expensive here. And so we are battling two things at the same time, people needing housing and needing to be able to afford that. People who own property needing to be able to afford to keep that. And so how are we starting to balance and negotiate that while we're trying to flood it with assistance? Because nobody's able to afford. And so I, I, I think that kind of presents a lot of your pictures, why is it so expensive? And what are we doing in ways of, of policy of development to find more affordable housing? And in, in that term, show landlords that these are the programs that are not only successful to the community, but are just, for me, automatic wins. A voucher is guaranteed payment on your mortgage every single month. That is guaranteed. So why are we moving away from that? Why are we seeing that trend? And we're seeing it naturally. This is not, you know, a county problem, obviously. HUD has been doing studies on what's going on here with the engagement of landlords and why are we seeing less and less acceptance of, of assistance or vouchers? And I, I think there is that, like I said, stigmatizing the, the type of individual that is considered poor or low income. And then that imbalance of, I've got to pay a mortgage, I've got to pay on this property, I own this business and I also have to afford housing. And so I think there needs to be some real conversation on how we start making real long-term changes as a community to make things more accessible, to make housing affordable. And I don't have all the answers to that, but I, I will say, I think that's, that's what's happening right now and why we got to this point.
Commissioner, if you don't mind me jumping in too, just from my role at Kansas Housing. So, you know, I, I go around, I, I talk about how our, our state so often responds to the crisis, whether it's a tornado in Greensburg or whether it's flooding in southeast Kansas or whether it's a pandemic. But we do have a systemic underlying housing problem and what it boils down to is economics. The best way I've heard it described is by the National Association of Home Builders. They talk about the five Ls. And they are lumber, their land, its labor, its laws and its lending. And each one of those have created challenges that we can go through if we had more time. And honestly, it's also an income issue because incomes simply have not kept up with the costs. So it's a supply and demand and really basic economics. We've tried to capture that this last year in our first statewide housing needs assessment that we've done in 30 years. Because we can't understand what the needs are until we can capture what they are. So this year we've had 80 regional meetings, including in northeast Kansas with targeted stakeholder groups to try to really get a definite idea what the needs are, what resources we have in our state to address them. And then so that we can have these types of conversations with policymakers at the county level, with employers, with nonprofits and with the legislature, congressional delegation. Currently, our state spends 69 cents per Kansan per year for housing. We all know what we spend on so many other important needs, but until we start actually recognizing that we need resources to actually address the housing gap, until we can address the underlying housing problem, we can't really take on the housing crisis. So we're grateful that we have all this, this federal money for this very specific use to keep people in their homes. But what we need to do is I'll be talking about how to build more homes. So I just wanted to make sure that we really think about it as an economic issue from a macro level, as well as the important things that Marielle talked about.
Ryan, I was just going to offer, you know, the county administrator and I met earlier with our, our government affairs lobbyist, Stuart Little, and you know, the county is really trying to think hard about how we can be, we can advocate in the legislature for the necessary changes that need to happen to help impact local issues. So I think, you know, please look to us if there's ways that we can be supportive and provide some local examples of how this, the impacts are here in Douglas County and we're always willing to, to weigh in and be supportive.
Thanks, Jill.
Gabby, I didn't know if you wanted to jump in there. You look like you had a thought.
I kind of do. I mean, Ryan said a lot of the things that I was thinking. So I, I mean, I do think about like developers here in town, like the city and the county. We need to be prioritizing developers who are using the low-income housing tax credit that's available but from the federal government, like we, we just need to, we need to be prioritizing those sorts of development models and projects instead of, you know, letting developers come in and demolish grandfather studios and build a high-rise apartment and stuff like that. But yeah, the, yeah, kudos to Ryan for saying exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I, I can just, I'm really pleased that Commissioner Reed and especially the work that you do all the time is on that Affordable Housing Board with the city. Because I think Ryan, the things that you're talking about, Marielle, Gabby, the, the, Carrie, the things you're talking about, it's a bigger, it's a big picture, you know, how do we provide more housing? And I was glad to hear the phrase about income in there because I think, you know, we're stuck at this low income. So people just can't afford, we're just pricing people out. It's what's happening in our area. And it's going to take a intergovernmental collaboration. We're talking about this here at the county, but we need to talk about it at the city when we think about how we develop the types of housing that we develop and how we expand the options for people's, or not just pricing them out of the market and then paying it on the backside when it's crisis. And I think when Jill asked the question at the start, like, how do we provide sustainability? Ryan, I hadn't heard the four Ls. That's helpful to me in thinking and communicating with people. You know, what laws can we change? What land use can we change? We see a lot of land use here at the county. We, we need to be thinking about how the decisions we make with land use are going to impact affordable housing. So I appreciate those thoughts and for giving me the time to share mine.
This is Commissioner Reed. Thank you, everybody, for making time today. And as some of you on this call know, it's become one of my favorite topics as of late. So I really appreciate, so the pre-conversation leading up to this. And I think there, there's a lot to dig into. Some of the highlights for me about today's conversation are certainly continuing to figure out at the county level, you know, what sort of space we want to, to lead in terms of rent and utility assistance and a bit of a one-stop shop. You know, we've had those conversations around kind of social services and human services access. Anyway, this is a cute example of, you know, it's such a common need across every, every corner of our community, including Udora and Baldwin and La Compton. And so I think that that is a charge for us to keep leading that at the county level and making a low-barrier model for access to those resources, whether it's one-time need or long-term need. And I also, I definitely, I'm excited about the trajectory of having Kansas Legal Services have some physical space in this county again. And that that is a huge need. And I, I think, and Carrie, jump in if I'm wrong, that in the time that Douglas County, or that Kansas Legal Services hasn't had a physical office here, that the referrals from Douglas County are probably pretty down and, or maybe a little bit more haphazard because there isn't a physical location for people to go self-refer. And there isn't always knowledge of that service and for Douglas County residents by all the social service providers. So I think that's another piece of it is, you know, through the HSC work especially, that's such a good venue for talking to all the service providers about how to be able to issue spot with their clients, the potential risk for eviction and knowing what legal resources and/or financial supports could be helpful in that. And so, and the potential for mediation ahead of time before it becomes a court process. Because I was, as we established here today, once something is filed with the court, you know, and to Gabby's question earlier, if it is never dismissed, even if it doesn't become a writ of restitution that is a final order of eviction, that is a public record that somebody had an eviction filed against them, even if it's sort of an open-ended, not dismissed case. And so I just think there's lots of layers of prevention ahead of time. Legal services is key to that. Why we do need that physical space in the county and some support of that. And then I'm also very interested in researching more about the mediation options. So very glad and unsurprised to hear that Gabby and Marielle are moving forward to figuring out how to hold space for that and, and make that option available to folks in the community before it gets to court. And I'm also interested in talking with our district court about local court rules and other strategies that may be possible within state statute to, to figure out how to put as many mitigation efforts in, in place as possible. So that, because Um, so that because of evictions are um, they're a huge barrier for people as we've established. And it's also an expense and a process for property owners that I think if, for many property owners, if given the opportunity to avoid it for other resolution um is ideal. And so I would be interested to see um some mediation efforts. And then Jill, I wanted to, um, I know, I know this kind of came together a little bit last minute of scheduling this date, but we have had some conversations with Chief Judge McCabry and he was really um helpful last week in gathering some numbers for us. And I know that um some basic numbers were printed in our agenda, but he did share um after our agenda was published, a, a document that has a little bit more detail in it and also some thoughts. So Jill, I just wanted to ask if you could share that with all the commissioners.
Yeah, we'll drop that in the agenda packet as well.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, no, we, we will do that. I wanted to make sure we wanted to do that, but we can do that as a follow-up.
Yeah, and I, that um both had some numbers about the number of petitions filed and then the number of writs of restitution that were executed. And there's certainly, you know, that number shrinks in terms of who is evicted um with that final writ. And so I think um there's maybe some, some interesting conversations in there and, and other places once, if and when it does get to court. I just think we need a multi-layered approach in our community and I'm super appreciative of everybody's work on it so far. And prevention efforts um are key. And I think that, that the landlord liaison efforts um are really innovative and important. Um, and I'm hoping it really shifts the conversation in our community.
Well, I want to thank the commissioners for making time for this presentation and conversation. Um, and huge thanks to our presenters today for making the time for it as well.
Thank you all. We, we will recess until 5:30 for our business meeting.